Go ahead and call the July 13th, 2026 PM workshop. Before you, under your July tab, we have the workshop items. We need to add or delete anything on the workshop items or the agenda. Everybody good? All right. Previous minutes.
Oopsie.
All right, we'll move on. Any board appointments or proclamations, commissioners, do we know of? Do you know of any?
No.
Okay. Any splash capital improvement commissioners we need to bring up to discuss?
We've got a little project about maybe putting some speed humps. I don't know, it's not, it's not a lot. It's, I don't know if it, it won't be enough to...
Well, we probably need to add that to item six on the workshop. We didn't have it in here at all, did we?
No.
All right. Let's back up and revise speed humps. At Price Street at Jenkins Park. We'll discuss that in item six on the workshop, so we amend the agenda. All right. We'll go ahead and just go ahead and discuss the discussion in Milton Circle. Joseph...
Bello.
Bello.
Hello.
Hello, Joseph Bello. Sent us a letter, y'all all been, was emailed that, and he's requesting buying some property there with inside the city, and requesting for agricultural use of the small farm. And we've got some information on that. Currently what it's owned is now, and so is Business Residential.
Yeah, it has to be R.A. Residential Agriculture.
Do what now?
It's a V.R. Business Residential. It will actually be moved to a R.A. Residential Agriculture.
So I believe the current property owner, Mr. Barton Harris, former mayor, Barton Harris, is here?
Yes, sir.
And I think there's been quite a bit on this, so I guess we can give it to y'all to explain, I guess, what you're asking for.
Sure. I'm Joseph Bello. My wife and I have been up here for the past couple of years, and I'm a chicken house improvement engineer over at Inceville down the road. And we're just looking to buy a property close to your work to kind of be more involved in the community that I actually work in, the Ronald Wayne Chickamaka.
Yeah.
But anyhow, pretty much what we're requesting is simply, Mr. Harris had previously had some horses on the property. There's a barn that still has hay in it. It's six acres, as you can see in the pictures. And we just want to be able to have the same opportunity to have horses, farm animals, things like that. Nothing crazy. I'm not looking to build a chicken house or anything like that. Just some farm animals to enjoy with my family. So, that's really it.
So I answered, here's the sheet here, and all around that, the orange is just currently what's on the other lots.
Yeah, what's touching that, that all they would have to be rezoned to that R.A.
Yeah.
Instead of just into the spazos, so everything that's in there would have to go to the R.A.
I did receive an email from Ron Weeks, which bought the property, the original house from our former mayor. And he is asking us to leave it, that it would likely have a negative impact on property values and living conditions in the neighborhood properties. So he's opposing it, I guess, of what he heard. And I guess the biggest question is for us, if we want to see about changing the zone, be the commission's decision, if they would like to, they would have to post it and have public hearings to see how the neighbors felt about it. Just like what we done, when we done the property up on the north end for Mr. Stone, Dole Stone. And we had those two public hearings and decisions on it. So I guess we need y'all's input and thought of what you'd like to do.
Could I speak at this point?
Yes, sir.
I'm surprised at Mr. Weeks, because he's had goats and chickens on his place there. I know he probably wouldn't buy a second or a little barn after the ride of the hail. I'm surprised that he connected, being that he had agriculture there itself. One of the things I've talked about, had mentioned about reinstating maybe the letter and the authorization, of course, I know Luther Joyner is no longer with us, but the letter he had written allowing me to have the horses to basically reinstate, to do that, whatever's the easiest, you know, to make this happen, but horses, wherever, you see the property is growing up after the tornado, it's just kind of took over. Horses and anything like that would be an improvement, as far as keeping them brushed down, things like that. I only got compliments from people coming to church on Sunday morning, the Frankins with the big ones, that would come to church, and they'd talk about how the kids, you know, love to see the horses out there, love to see the horses, but, you know, I would, I just wanted to give you some background information on the fact that I had horses, why I had horses, and why I say why, because Luther Joyner, there was a, there was a woman, Mr. Chris, if you remember this, about where the city limits was with the Joe Ashley, and that's kind of what started all of this. And I ended up in the city limits, which was fine with me, and I told Mr. Chris that when we first started discussing taxes. But anyway, like I say, it's not like we're trying to put a bunch of animals on a half acre lot. They six, little over six acres, our barn, shop, house, all the, you know, facilities to take care of, you know, animals, and I've had... I just, you know, would ask if y'all would take that into consideration for his request, you know, and mine, and, you know, to let the settled property go through. I am surprised by Mr. Weeks, being that he's had chickens and goats.
He was the only one that emailed me.
Well, I got a call from the Blavins.
The ones built the new house on the corner by shallow?
Yeah.
What'd they say?
Well, she, she didn't seem too favorable, but, you know, I just live down the street from there. And what I would say is, you know, I spent a lot of time at your house. Your place was beautiful, Barton. It was absolutely beautiful. Your OCD, everything was perfect. I was telling Kurt that earlier. And there was no doubt, that was a beautiful place. And it's still a pretty place. But when you was there, you owned about the whole block.
Mm-hmm.
Well, since then, it's been divided up, and you've sold it, and now there's this, whereas it was one owner, now there's several owners there. And down here where the pasture was, mostly, that's where, like on the corner, that's where Nicky's building a house, and then the Weeks took the ones...
Just your original house.
Yeah, your original house. And I drove up there myself yesterday, and I took some pictures, and, and it is all grown up. And it's hilly, and it's like, where, where I would say, I would think the horses would be, that's already been divided up, and other people on that now.
The hilly part, it's hard to tend to, actually. You would think of that as doing it backwards, because the horses makes it easier on the hilly part for you to take care of. That's part of what happened.
Well, what about the...
Not just the tornado, but part of what happened, I got rid of the horses about 10 years ago, and then I couldn't stay ahead of it without the horses.
Well, what about the pond? Is that part of it?
Yeah.
That would be part of what he would get.
Yeah. There's a survey on, behind your...
Well, have you looked at what I, I mean, I don't know, I've never had horses, but I know there's a lot, I know they're high maintenance.
Yeah.
It would, it, what would you be looking at doing to get it ready for those? I wouldn't think you could just put them out there.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm not thinking about that at all. I can assure you, I'm a little OCD, my wife will tell you that, you know, with an engineering background, that's just kind of how I think. So I would want to have the place fenced before I even put horses out there. And so I'm not even saying that I'd be putting horses out there immediately. I would want to make sure that everything is ready before anything like that. So I'd probably put some field fencing or something like that out there, you know, to ensure it looks good and...
Mine was the horses or pony would be for his child, and his child right now don't live out like this.
Yeah.
It's not an immediate...
Well, when you said livestock, you didn't say horses, you said livestock.
Yes, ma'am.
And farm, so you're talking about?
Oh, I was just talking about general farm animals. I haven't really thought so much in depth of what exactly do I want, but I'm not trying to have some, I'm not trying to put some chicken houses up, and I think that might be where their concern is. It's just some farm animals for my family and I to enjoy, you know, just like that.
Yeah. I didn't know the Weeks had goats. I've seen some chickens, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen, which I don't, I mean, you know, I don't have, I don't have a problem with animals, trust me. I like them better than anybody in this room. I do. Barton can tell you that. But, you know, I just...
We've done some research on the letter that Barton explained, and we did ever did see where it was propped before the commission to approve that change. It was just a letter that time from Mr. Joyner. And truthfully, if we do this, just like we have to do, it'd be y'all, y'all's decision or our decision as a city and a commission to post it for zone changing, if you wanted to. If you think you want to change it for Mr. Bello and Mr. Harris, then we have to post the property, write it in the paper, have the public hearings to deceive the owners around the property agree to it. Then we'd have to decide how far it would be.
Are you talking about fencing in the whole six acres?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I would want to do. And if it wasn't the whole six acres, it would be where the animals are.
Well, right here where the Blavins have built that new house?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, right next to that, is that not a lot that's for sale?
Oh, that lot is all part of the neighborhood.
Hey, look behind your minute.
I see it right here.
No, look behind the other thing there. There's a whole survey right here in your book.
See everything in green, that's what I would do.
Here's what, here's what the Blavins is building the house.
Well, it's kind, it's the same thing as here, but I just thought that there was a lot right here.
No. Well, it's part of it, and the reason I had it done this way, this is a okay entrance if you ever wanted to build in here, but if you don't, I didn't really trust this as an exit because of the hill, so I left it like this, we could come out here.
So the water would go with it?
Yes, ma'am.
The pond, yes.
Everything you see in green, so...
So that, so there's not a lot for sale right there?
Yeah, that's, that's a lot that I would be...
That's the four acres, that's a big tract, that's four acres.
Okay.
Well, it's four point, well...
Four point oh four or something.
Four point oh four, I think the house is two point oh two, so it's six point zero six acre, I think.
Yeah, so, so anywhere where I would have animals in, I would have it fenced in over there. The reason why I said I'm not sure about the whole six acres is because this is where the house is and whatnot, but the barn is kind of right there. So I'd probably be fencing in whatever to get into the barn and out there. So the animals would be contained, you know, I can assure you I'm not going to be...
You're supposed to have like an acre and a half per horse, aren't you?
Yes, to answer your question.
There you go. But I'm only looking for a couple horses. I'm not looking at put a bunch of horses out there, you know, just for some family use, I'm not boarding, nothing like that, you know, so...
And it could be written up that way as for personal use and/or consumption, not necessarily to eat a horse, but if they had a chicken.
Yeah, I'm not going to eat a horse, but...
Okay.
Hey, Mike, you guys want to write up anything as well, like, you know, chick, uh, chicken house? I'm not going to put a big chicken house out there, because I kind of feel like that might be their concern, is, hey, we don't want a chicken house out here, because now it's going to be agriculture, and we don't want pig slaughter place, or whatever it might be. It's just a little family home.
And I don't know off the top of my head, what does the, the zoning that there, that's there now, the residential, what does it say as far as, does it say no animals whatsoever move? Because for technically to be a farm, you would need to be buying and selling, you know, farm stuff. I'm talking what they used to call hobby farm, is not necessarily farming, you know, if you get it just for yourself.
Well, you was on the commission when y'all passed that, because I remember.
Passed what?
About the farm animals, and you got grandfathered in?
No, they were passing in the management.
No, they, we never passed anything on the commission. I was grandfathered in because I was technically not in the city. Then I was, and I already had horses on the place.
Luther just hand wrote, or wrote a letter on the C letter, had nothing come before the commission.
I had the horses before I was in the city, therefore I was grandfathered in. No, they couldn't take me in the city and say, now you got to sell your horses.
Right.
Yeah.
But the letter also said, once the horses was gone for one year...
Right.
Then I couldn't bring horses back.
Right, yeah, well, that's what I...
That's what the letter said, but it was never brought before the commission.
And I think I had that letter in my hand a few months ago, and I thought, I don't need this no more.
Opinion on it is, I would, I would like to see the surrounding area, the, the homeowners and stuff like that, their opinion on it before I would ever say yea or nay, you know, as far as, you know, because me personally, if, you know, I, I own the house here, and somebody moved in beside me, and they had horses, or whatever it is, you know, if, if that's not what I would want beside me, you know, I'd like to know that, you know, I had a say so or opinion in it, you know what I mean?
That's the way I, I agree also.
Because you're invested in your home, and then somebody comes beside you and, you know, has whatever they want, it makes a difference, you know, as far as how they feel about it as citizens, you know, that they're going to have to live beside it, so...
And this thing I would like to mention, though, is, it's not like we're trying to use something that the property wasn't used for in the past, right? This is something that already had happened. Yes, the property has been ready the past couple of years, but, you know, there's a full-on barn there, you can see that's a pretty old barn, has hay, still running. So I think it's a little bit different than I just say, hey, I'm going to throw some horses up here or whatnot. So whether it's continuing a variance that was made, or, or if it's a zoning change, you know, whatever you guys think is the best, I'm not a professional in that area, you know.
What is it, what does it state in the city?
Go ahead, no.
Oh.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, what does it state as far as in the city about, you know, farms, and then, like, if they sell the place, does it go along with it, or is it, are there a certain time limit, or...
Well, again, the letter was wrote without knowledge or in the books.
I'm not, I'm not saying his situation, I'm saying any situation in the city.
One year, you know, mobile homes, any mobile homes that's in areas that you can't put a mobile home in now, there's one area you can pull it out, certain you and then I can do it every year. Most everything is set up on a year, but the same thing with my horses.
What's that?
Take them out once they're gone a year, and bring them back.
So you, how long has it been since?
Oh, it's been ten years since I...
Certain things.
I want to say without the horses.
But we don't have much of that left.
Now, because the horses actually have to keep...
Oh, yeah, I understand that, you know. I'm not, I'm not opposed to having farm animals. I'm just saying in the city and, you know, the people, the surrounding people.
My next question would be, how much time are we talking to do off this, because I'm sitting here on property, and we're ready to close, and now we're talking, you know...
Is it a deal breaker for you?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, you know, six acres with a barn, you know, what do you do with six acres and a barn if you can't have any type of farm, farm animals on there, right? So I do think it, it brings up a, what's the term? With a, with a variance that'll, basically holding a variance hardship. What I was saying is, I feel that it brings up some sort of a hardship also for Mr. Harris, because it prevents him from selling his property, because it is one of the contingencies in our contract that we're able to proceed forward.
Legally, we can't do it without a zoning change and a vote from the public or input. I don't think we can. And if we do, I mean, we've got people opposing it already.
No, we can't do it, I live there.
Yeah, so, you know, we, we done this with Mr. Stone, and...
We got to do it right.
You know, the, the, that's the only way we can really do it. You know, not to say how it happened before, and it was in, and it's been a while, but we've got to follow the charter of the city, and that's what our attorney is telling us to do. So we would have to, if the commission agrees to hold a zoning change, we would have to post it for moving it from a business residential to residential agricultural. And then we'd have to decide what that area would be, because we can't really spot property like that, can we?
Pretty much everything in the orange touching the goats there.
Yeah.
So that would make anybody over there be able to...
Everybody touching everything, like it's an orange highlight.
So all the orange, it would go for them too?
Yeah. Because the way the ordinance, it touches them, you have to change it all.
And one other thing to mention, I went into the zoning as well myself, I don't think that it's a, an area that would be crazy to zone residential agriculture, because it is rolling hills over there, while if you go over that way, right behind, you know where the cow farm is?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That area where that cow farm is, right around that neighborhood, it turns into residential agriculture, and it's very similar housing, very similar...
You talking about rice?
You talking about in front of the high school, or what?
Oh, so if you have a high school here, you have the cow farm, which you go down this road, and you go back down that way, it would be residential agriculture over there.
Listen, I, this used to be, I remember saying it's bad looking now, but it, it was beautiful.
Yeah.
It was beautiful. But, you know, one person had all of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
So the question's going to be y'all's decision if you want to look for a zone change, that we post it, we have to get proper notice, I'm not sure what the timeframe...
We have to, we have to set a public hearing, we have to run it in the paper, have a sign out there 15 days prior to the public hearing.
Then you have to have a special called hearing. Was it one hearing or two?
Uh, I think I just wanted to just...
One here.
And didn't we go through this with the...
Dole Stone.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And somebody has to oppose it?
Well, the people in there, you got the two that's already, than anybody else that's in there, had to be notified that the property would be changing, so it'd be Ron Weeks, Ms. Blavins, and all the people up in Milton Circle, the ones that are up through there to know that, they'd have to come here and voice their opinion, what they'd like to be changed, just like we sat through it with all those other folks, and listened to the do's, yes or no.
And let me say, I said the Blavins, she, she kind of talked, I don't know for sure, she just had questions, and, and it sounded like she might have been...
Yeah, it's, um...
Now, Blavins, you're talking about the people that's building the house.
No, it's actually her.
To sell.
To sell.
Yeah. I thought it was Nicky's personal home.
No, it's not.
Is it not?
No, it's Blavins Construction that built it to sell.
And like I say, I think he has, you know, more guts to come here and ask what he's asking, when you consider the Weekses and other people to just do it and don't ask permission. I hate to see that he's getting penalized, I think myself included, for the fact that he's doing the right thing.
I have a question. A residential agricultural zone is different than a commercial agricultural zone, right? So doesn't it already have things built into that zoning that you couldn't build anything commercial size like a chicken house, like a huge chicken house anyway? I'm just curious. Because if they're thinking move to agriculture, and they're thinking it would be any type of agriculture, and residential agriculture is something smaller, like a hobby farm, then that may make a difference, you know? I mean, so when I think residential agriculture, I don't think huge feedlots or, you know...
I think it's states in there that can have a chicken house, agriculture, they can have anything like that.
Even for residential agriculture?
Yeah, because it follows under agriculture.
When you say chicken...
Residential agriculture is followed by...
Yeah, but when you say chicken house, I'm thinking the big commercial ones are we talking little chickens.
Either whatever they want under agriculture. Saying residential, all it's saying is you can build one to two family dwelling houses or have agriculture. Like business residential, you can either have business, or you can have...
And residential.
But it's kind of split, yeah, but that is your question.
Yeah, it does.
In that case, since there's a house part of that property, you're saying that it can either be two dwellings, right, or it can be agricultural use? Since there are two homes on there, it would just be a hobby farm, correct?
No, I'm not for your part, because it's non-zoned agriculture.
Well, I'm saying if it was, if it was zoned, is that right? Because if you have the, the cow farm over there, they split up that zoning, right, where the cow farm is on, what is it, Conservation or something like that? And then the house's farm is owned for, I think, business residential?
Where's this at?
Yeah, you're talking about over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the big cow pasture over there.
Is it down along?
Ronnie Page's guess.
Yeah. So I guess what my point is, is if my house is on there as a dwelling, right, I, I couldn't make it full-on commercial operation if it's a two dwellings or...
Well, it's either, to have a farm, you have to have, you have to have residential in five acres, which you'll have on five acres from up at the apartment. As long as you figure, like he was with the big chickens, as long as you fell in between the setbacks and everything, and you had that five acres, you could do that.
So is there a way that, because I think, I think you have a good point over there in regard to, there's probably some confusion in, in people responding in a negative way, because they have no idea what, what are you going to put on that, right? Is there a way that actually be communicated that we're just looking to do a little hobby farm, something simple of that? Because I understand if I was living there, and somebody's putting up a chicken house, and now I'm going to smell a huge chicken house next to me, I understand why you'd have a problem with that. But a hobby farm really doesn't do anything, you know? So maybe if that can be communicated to them, that's me to hear, not them.
Well, that'd be what they hear, or they'd be here, you'd be here, and you can explain to them. I'm sure they let you talk first before they got it and started talking. But it's kind of what's probably here with them.
I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, I'm not opposed to a hearing, to find out how, how the other people feel, but, but...
Legally, we can't do it without that, I don't believe.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I'm just, I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not opposed to going forward to that. But, but you would understand that with all these people bordering this, if, if I had these, all these people showed up and they were against it, you know, I would have to support that.
So...
Same here.
What could be done essentially, because, you know, Mr. Harris did bring up a point, you know, there are multiple people within the city limits that do have farm animals and things like that, and, you know, they're just, it's not being enforced, they're not following it. And what I'm trying to do is make sure that I take the correct, you know, I follow the laws, and I take the correct actions, you know? Personally, not to get too religious, but my family are Christians, and we want to act in a way that the ministry is not blamed. And so I'm trying to do the right thing, I don't really think it's exactly fair or right, that it's okay for everybody else, but not okay for me. Does that make sense?
I understand.
Can I say something? I am the property owner, I bought Mr. Harris's house. Our only big deal is the runoff from the pond, it goes right through my front yard, to the side of the barn for the tree, where the tree luggage, that runs down. I don't want horse poop and horse flies and the smell coming from that.
Now, do y'all have animals at your house?
No, we had dogs, huh? We had two goats at one time, and about five chickens, but my dad passed, and we got rid of all that. Our thing is the upkeep and the smell and the luck.
I don't think you really can have a big smell from a little hobby farm, you know, like...
I had five horses there, I lived there where you lived.
But it's in the city limits, I mean, we're like three houses down from business from our house.
But I will, but again, Barton, you're the exception. People just don't know that.
I thought you were the mayor at the time.
You're OCD, too.
The mayor didn't have anything to do with that.
No, it didn't, it didn't, no, it didn't have anything.
Not at that time, it did not.
I had horses before I even in the city.
It is also on the edge of the city limits, I, do you think I had important to bring out?
It's the edge, it's on the edge.
Ashton Lane is the...
Dead end of a dead end street, you get the, the last thing by, you got...
Well, the city, the city continues on McKay Grove, what she said.
But I'm saying, right up here, as soon as you go that way, you're out of the city limits.
No, you got...
I'm not talking about down that way, I'm talking about.
You can knock down that.
Yeah, I'm talking about if, if you're right here and you go up towards the mountain, you're out of the city limits. That's why, I'm not saying down McKay, I know that McKay continues to extend that way.
You're talking about up where the house is?
Yes.
But, but.
That's part of the, the law, right?
Yeah, and but the field goes down Highway 11 on?
No, McKay Grove.
I mean, not Highway 11.
Yeah, McKay.
Yes.
So back over there where David lives, is that, is that like, isn't that Mike's property?
Yeah, Mike Lawson borders behind him.
Okay, the construction.
I also have a question in regard to the runoff thing, what's the deal with that? Have you experienced that or?
I mean, the pond, everything runs through there, but as far as the smell, that's not an issue. The biggest issue that I had while I was there was the road going up to Joel's Parks, the mud from that road, it was bad, turns the pond muddy every time it comes hard hard rains.
Yeah, because it all goes down to the pond.
Pond stays muddy, huh? But it still goes right through my front yard, I mean, I'm sure you've gone by there and seen it built up right in front of you. And up down the edge of the woods too, it piles up right there.
Where's your house, man? On this map, just so I can better understand.
Partially, partially, but.
Oh, yeah? Oh, right there.
Yeah.
Well, doesn't the hillside go down like, sorry?
They can basically go down in my backyard.
Say, say, this is the property right here, doesn't the gradient of the hill go down towards the pond, because that's why a pond is there, because the front yard is right here of your, of your home, so if it's, you're following a gradient, that's why there's a pond there, go right over there. So I see how it could maybe click the corner of your back of your property, but the pond is back behind that.
If there's any water, it comes out of the pond there, the hill behind our house is graded and ditched, it goes down behind the barn, not across the yard. And that I'm sure.
Where is that big runoff that goes across my front yard that's coming from the pond?
Comes from the pond, that's what I say, if what comes off the hill is graded, it goes behind the barn.
So I was just looking around the other property, even Mike Lawson's property is BR, all of his acreage is there, where his business and stuff is too, I was just looking at that. So what do y'all like to do? So there's requests to change?
I said, I don't mind having a hearing on anything, but, 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 you know, you're sitting here looking at coming here, she's sitting here and she's here, she's, she's already vested. Do what?
To increase my value of the house, trying to sell it next to.
I think it would increase it if you have some horses next to you and if you're sitting in balance.
I mean, I'm more concerned about how you feel about it, you know what I'm saying? We have to represent the people that are, you know, I would, what you feel would have more weight with me than what he does, because you're already here.
Part of the reason for the trees, the woods and everything behind you is because the horses were sold in here and.
I mean, it used to be beautiful.
You know, kept up ahead of, you know, what the horses have to keep up.
I don't know how he's gonna keep it up compared to how you kept it up.
Well, I'm sure you're gonna do a good job, you know? I know you can only judge by my word, but I can tell you I'm gonna do a good job, and I don't want to create a nuisance or anything like that for you, and I'm, you know, you want to give me a feedback to say, hey, can you move that a little bit more over there? Just let me know, you know?
But would they not need like some flat land?
No, horses, no.
Really?
Really.
A lot of it is kinda rolling hills at the bottom of that, so you have more of the steeper hill up into the barn, but you're raising more rolling hills.
I say we do it here.
Okay.
Is there also a way to do something other than, I'm sorry, just one last question, is there also a way to do something other than a zoning change or whatnot, because?
We can't, we can't break the bylaws of the city, our camp city ordinance has got a drive that way that gives us authority what we can and can't do.
Okay.
We verified with our city attorney, and I don't think anyone's gonna do it without public input.
The reason I ask is because I understand it was a letter, but still at the same time, obviously during that time when that letter was given, that was an okay thing because he was allowed to have horses on his property. So I understand that standards have changed, but usually what will happen is, you know, that's why variances get given or whatever. But I'm just asking, trying to.
That's, that'd be somebody to make a motion, I mean, we gotta follow the charter and that's what it's done, what happened before was never brought before the commission from the mix up from city or county, and then, you know, legally, I don't think we can, even what we addressed with our attorney, the only way to do it is a zone change to allow it to happen. Only variances we can give on the zone is footage where houses are coming up, and it's too close for things like that.
And so what, and what, what happened with the cow farm over there, we got just a variance that was given?
Where's that?
That's been there for years.
He was grandfathered in.
That's actually, it's been family, it was looking for years.
For Mr. Page?
Yes.
Yeah. It's probably that way when the city was created.
Yeah, it was.
We only have that and then, do we have any others in the city? So Anthony Emmanuel's property, is it in the city, over there behind?
I'm not sure.
No, behind the middle school?
Yeah, I don't know if it is or not.
In the, in the middle school in the city?
It is, but I think the county, the city limits is behind it, it's the property line of it, I have to.
And like I said, we've got men that's come here trying to do it the right way and he's able to turn it down, and all the other people that's doing it to our.
There is a thing in the residential, they can have certain chickens and things like that, it's limited in an answer in the residential, but when he's asking for livestock and farming, that's different, that's what qualifies for agricultural change from what you said.
Maybe a little bitty horse don't qualify for that, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not looking at.
Talking about one of them little bitty ponies.
Yeah, I'm not looking at a bunch of livestock like, you know, the place in front of, in front of the high school, I was just using general farm animal type terms, you know, I'm looking to have a few horses and, you know, some chickens or things like that, you know, nothing crazy big or anything like that, so.
Because we had a lot of people buy the small chicken coops, and a lot of people's got them, and we, it was found in the ordinance where it did qualify for that, as long as it was a certain number and the movable, movable thing, had to stay within your pen, it's no different than your dog, it has to stay on your property, if it gets out of your property and if something happens, then you're liable for it.
So are they, and if you don't have that, you're allowed to have chickens and what else are you allowing, I understand people.
Here what it is, answer.
Things around here?
Not, not goats really, chickens or, I guess, ducks in the pond and stuff like that, but we get livestock, horses, goats, cows and.
But just also to be specific, I'm just talking about a few, a few horses, maybe some goats in the future, or even like chickens.
That's what I'm saying.
Like three, like three horses, that's what I'm calling a few, you know?
Because you can't put 15 horses on six acres, no, it's an acre, I'm moving it in the yards.
That'd cost you much money, I don't want that, so.
And I said that to clarify what you're calling a few.
I'll make a motion then.
What if, what if I put it on the, on the agenda, wouldn't we?
Yeah, we'd have to, if y'all want to hold a hearing. Yeah, just looking around that other property too, seeing what it was.
So how does a hearing go, like, how, people are fine with it, other people are opposed, how many people does it take that are opposed to it in order to not allow that to happen? Or is that just a, a decision that's made by the commissioners after reviewing or?
All right, so we had a consent agenda be voted on for the zoning change. Anything else? Nine six, the speed humps for the Price Street and Jenkins Park.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Ansel talk about this, we've had a little, little problem with some people going maybe a little bit too fast.
We've had some near incidents of the kids crossing between the parking lot and getting into the new park or to the entrance of the park.
And we just want to make sure no one gets hurt, and this, this is not a very expensive project at all.
The first type of show, the state, you know, we're looking at, if you go down on, where it is, it's gonna be top of Raleigh, we had two, we put three that goes all the way across, and then four total signs, we get like a pedestrian walk, paint, some people can walk through, speed hump signs, warning people, and then one, five gallon bucket of white traffic paint, but I just priced for one, I'm not sure if it'll take another five gallons, I'm not sure how much it covers a top to Timmy, they think one will do it, but if it wasn't, they had to buy two, it's something that they use a lot of time too, it's not going to go all the way. The first speed, four total signs, one gallon, five gallon bucket of paint, it's gonna be around fifteen hundred, ninety dollars and ninety cents. If you flip over to the next page, there's a diagram of Price Street, you'll see the three yellow, three yellow lines going across Price Street, that's kind of a location where we're looking at foot and speed humps, the white marking is gonna be, we're gonna mark it off for the pedestrian walk, crossing, because it has to be white, because if you say you're coming around that sidewalk, you can't go straight across because of the ditch and landscaping, and then of course, the two signs on each side, if you flip over the next two pages, it'll show the pedestrian crossing sign, and then the hawk and speed gun, ten mile per hour sign, log on grand post, right before the speed humps one. Like I said, I did several, several emails and phone calls, uh, people flying up down the street, he is almost being hit crossing the street.
Besides the gravel parking by the scout building, this is the majority of the parking for the pool, civic center, and for the ballgames for folks to walk in, and it could be even to the point later on down there by the backing cages, they still park down there in the gravel some as well, too, don't they?
Yeah.
We'd have to watch that area down there when they go to the backfield, because they have parked down there on Rail Street.
Yeah, I talked to Ronnie about that, he said maybe somebody can add one later if he thinks up towards Main Street, but to see how it does about going further down, let's see what they have to do, because most of it's turned off, fast food street, getting faster than the freeway here.
All right, y'all good with it?
Good with it.
Okay, and I did confirm with Ron, we can put these in any street we want, that was one of those questions that come up.
Really?
Yeah, we have to give, for speeding areas, we just have to make sure the proper signage is put in there right, and certain things ahead, like the stop bars, that's one of the things, I think, Tim and him slow down a little bit before it gets too cold, a lot of our stop bars, we had them do, are starting to come up, so we may look at more of that paint to finish repainting them.
And I think Ansel, what do you say?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I've got a few calls too, and I think that's when we started working on it, and I went ahead and checked with Ron while we were there, that we can do anything on our city streets, and changing the speed, what would they, 15 or 10, 10 miles per hour through there? Again, the kids at the park, they've noticed as they're playing, they go over at the next door, and they walk up behind the park, the golden gallon or the fast food, and they walk back through, so, just make it safer for everybody through there. Anything else in the workshop, commissioners? No, we'll take a short recess and we'll come into a regular meeting. Yeah, I want us to go right in.
Right in, silent, Mick.
All right. All right, Alex, you got a reboot?
No.
All right, let's go then. Brother Eddie, did you want to address in the work session?
I could, I'd like to, you tell me.
Well, let's, let's just let you come on unless you need to leave after prayer.
Hold on, I just want to let everybody know Jeff Pendergrass, some of you met him, our general manager, he has been with us about a year, he resigned last week, he's another, another employment opportunity, so I'll let you know about that, the board will be meeting to work on.
Replacement.
Replacement or whatever we're gonna do, I can't speak to the board, but we'll be meeting in a couple of weeks to start discussing that and see what we're gonna do, and that's really about it, we're working on a legal matter on some property, but that's about all I've got.
All right, as we know, Brother Eddie is our representative on the water and sewer authority, we appreciate, and he's actually chairman of that board.
And we were just surprised that Jeff resigned like that.
Abiding.
You know, it just, out of blue.
Well, good deal, I know y'all worked hard to get that, and we appreciate your service on that board.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the regular meeting to order, if Brother Eddie won't care to pray for us, and then we'll go into invocation, invocation, and do pledge of allegiance.
Father, we are so thankful that we can be here tonight, and we pray that you bless our leaders, give them the wisdom and guidance that they need to do your will and to follow you, and again, we're so grateful for all you've done for us, for your many blessings, draw us closer to you and unite us together just to serve you and do what is best for our community, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and in the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, thank you, Brother Eddie.
Thank you.
We'll do a real call, Commissioner House?
Here.
Commissioner Forsey?
Here.
Commissioner Wooton?
Here.
Commissioner Powell?
Here.
Do have a forum to continue with our meeting, at this time, we'll go into department reports, and we'll go ahead and start with Terry, Commissioner Powell.
Okay, the community center is still closed due to the COVID-19 restrictions, so it's not being rented at this time, animal control, we had 12 animal control work orders or complaints. Girl softball has started at Jenkins Field and will continue through the month of June. The pool is open, doing very well, it's been, it's been very busy there, so I want to thank everybody for coming to the pool, we appreciate it, and that's all that I have.
Commissioner Wooton, street department.
Other than our normal cleanup and maintenance, we have, we have hired a new guy, his name is Tyler Wright, and he's from, from up at Dobbin's area, or Higdon area, and we have contacted Kissner Paving about doing our paving, and the guy, you know, they're backed up like everybody else, but we did talk to him again today, so I could give you an update, and he assured me that he would be here next week, he assured me of that, said he was gonna move some people around, and I, and I kinda let him know that, you know, he'd already told us he'd be here, and there was other people that did it too, so, so I really think he'll be here, so that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Forsey, current police.
Current police department answered 489 calls of service during the month of June, conducted 1,886 business checks, made 12 arrests, had seven animal complaints, six domestic calls, five medical assist calls, one residential fire, four mental health calls, eight thefts, and worked 18 accidents. 139 citations were issued in the city. The collected fines for May, I mean, if that is a, should be for June.
Yeah.
Were $12,130 total fines collected for 2020 year to date is $63,162.28. I do want to mention the Toucha Truck, it will be on July the 25th at the Dade County High School, and it's gonna be just a drive-through thing, and they'll still be handing out all the stuff, the backpacks for the kids and all that, so please come out and join in doing that and bring your kids, or giving away stuff that they would need in school, so. Also, just keep our officers in your prayers, you know, this is a trying time right now, just lift them up in your prayers, all around the world, you know, all these officers need that, so, but that's all I've got.
Mr. House?
Well, I've got two good guys. I think you could probably hear them a lot better than you can hear me with this thing on.
You gonna give it to them?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to them, who wants to go first?
Inspection and fire department, we've got 10 inspections going on, we've completed 10 electrical, HVAC, oil plumbing inspections, and also completed four additions or remodels for new constructions, the fire department had.
Fire department had three fire-related calls, seven accidents, two medical. We were dispatched and canceled in route to twenty, with a total of thirty-two calls dispatched.
For the sewer department, for the month of June, we had forty-two locates. Nine of those locates were after hours emergency locates. We had twenty-two sewer calls, and we repaired one main line and service line on Poplar Avenue for Tom Davenport.
Yeah, I know some of those pictures could have been put in with that.
Yeah.
It was bad. No, I don't know.
As always, we appreciate y'all's work and what you do, all the departments. As Kirk said, pray for all the public safety folks, even our street departments. I mean, all of government right now is under the eye of certain things in these times, but what they're out there trying to do, so it takes the team to keep it, keep it going. Going to my report, again, we've been just as busy as we all, helping each and every one of us as a team as we go. And some of the things I wanted to talk about was some of the Golden Dome updates. Y'all may have received these from GMA. One of the things that we have really watched since COVID is our loss tax, and each month it continues to go up. Our last month was forty-four, right at forty, but it was the month of.
Forty-four to forty-two.
Yeah, so before that, it was around thirty-five thousand, the prior month. Prior to that, it was thirty, so it's made three steps. And one of the things that has really affected us since April first, all of your sales taxes on anything that's sold online, based on the zip codes of our, of our, where you live at. And for the month of April, thirty-eight point five million dollars was collected in the sales tax for online sales. And that will continue to go as more vendors comply with the law, as more of that's to use coming in. So, you know, a lot of time during COVID, people sat still, they weren't out buying.
And the sales tax come up, so you still got to get things going, but it was also with the takeouts and things like that, and that was really good for, for us as well. Another good thing that happened to us as well is some of the citation fines that we get. We were like, the counties and the cities were like tenth on the list of when you pay your fines. So as that, as you paid that fine, if somebody was making payments, it could go quite a while. So the cities and counties moved from tenth to fourth in line as the citation has come in, so that was a big, a big help for us as well, so as funds come in. You've all heard about the CARES Act. We did apply for that. GMA and ACCG fought really hard for the cities and the counties to receive some funding to help out any economical issues. Rasana worked really hard at getting that information in through the portal. We're still waiting on the final guides. They have stress some numbers to the cities and counties, what we would be receiving. It would come in chunks, and it has to be related to COVID. So as we've talked about the out front, to make it safer for this public building as people come in, things like that could be used to pay for that. Again, GMA and ACCG in the state is going to create another portal where you have to submit what you're going to do to get approval. You fund it, build it, and they reimburse you back a hundred percent. So they're giving us some timeline to have a lot of this stuff done before December of this year, so. Once those guidelines come in and the stipulations, it has to be for your public safety, public health, the health of your buildings, how to sanitize and clean, and there's other things if you had a nursing home, a city owner, county nurse at home, or doctor's offices and things like that. So we're going to really study on this. It's going to be a fast-paced moving item, so, and it's, it's on up there. I want to say it's around a hundred and thirty-two thousand or a hundred and twelve thousand that will be awarded to us, so. And any economic loss that we took, and one of the things for Terry is we've had to hire two extra people to do the COVID cleaning, the constant cleaning of surfaces, so we could take what we spent for those employees of that time and reimburse our budget for that, because we did not budget for that in 2020. So other hardships that we've had to take with our sanitation type material we bought, any other things that we got, we will turn on a specific grant, but from June thirty, from now on, to prepare for COVID, there's funding out there to help get us that way, so. Once that comes in, we'll be working on that to see where we stand. Going to our financials, that's all I have, under tab two. General fund account balance ending June thirty, 2020 is four hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Profit and loss for the month of June, page two, income was seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Page seven starts our expenses ending June was a hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred dollars. Year-to-date, page three, January through June, so we should be at fifty percent for forty-nine point nine eight to the exact, but revenue collected, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, one hundred, one hundred and four and thirty-one cents. It's forty point three percent revenue ending June. And the end of this report, page ten, expenses is seven hundred, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and fifty-seven cents. So we're only at forty-three point one percent. So even though we're not sitting at fifty, we're just one, about three point two percent over. Again, I think it's really good that we're that close, and the departments are doing a real good job of taking care of that. Our next sewer fund is eighty-two, ending June thirties, eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents, and then your bank reconciliation is behind that. Income for the month of June is twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-eight cents, and its total expenses for the month of June is twenty-four thousand, four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Year-to-date fees collected by sewer is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-five cents, and we're at forty-five point three percent. And total expenses is a hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and three dollars and forty-seven cents, so we're at forty-four point seven percent. So we're a little bit over, but again, with some of the major breaks and stuff we've had, I think we're doing just fine. Hotel motel fund, ninety thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Your reconciliation is behind that. The next one, this is our fund balance, savings account fund balance of a hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents, and that comes to us quarterly, so this is ending the second quarter of the year, and your reconciliation is behind that. Trenton Police Department special fund is two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-two cents, with your reconciliation behind it. Fire department fund is six hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents, and your reconciliation is behind that. Tab three, this is your splash. Current standings in the bank is a hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents, and your reconciliation is behind that, and your breakdown by departments is on the large sheet. So that'd be my report and the financials, and we will need a motion to approve the financials as read.
I'm making a motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Forsey.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any other discussion? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll get into appearances, and Ms. Eloise sneak in on us? I believe she has. Ms. Marshana Sharp. Mister, we do have somebody here from Alliance with Dade.
Yes, do I just sit?
Yes, just, just go, or whatever you like to do.
Thank you. I haven't been before to address you all, so I want to kind of tell you a little bit about me and what I'm doing, and then I'll get into the issues. My name is Jane Hickson. I am the secretary now for what's called the Alliance for Dade. As a committee member, I am the chair of the publicity committee and of the business services committee. So since I haven't been here before, I really feel that I want to tell you a few things, but I don't want to tell you things that William has told you. So I don't know really, has William addressed you all in the past about what we've been doing, or are you aware of it? Okay, well, let me just tell you just a few items and then catch you up, and then I want you to ask some questions if you have any. We have, we're addressing ourselves as an umbrella. See if I can try to share that with you. And the umbrella has a name, and it's called the Alliance for Dade. Under that umbrella, there are two entities. One is the tourism, which encompasses the welcome center, and the other is the chamber, the Chamber of Commerce. So it's very important to us that we be able to make people in the community be aware of that we have a very active chamber and that we have a welcome center and a place that people can go. We are restructuring of how it was in the past because it was said by whomever that we needed to change. We needed a new way of doing things with the Chamber of Commerce. So therefore, this umbrella, the Alliance for Dade, puts together the chamber, the welcome center of tourism. We have a president, her name is Kathleen Reed. You may know Kathleen, she works at the bank. We have a vice president, his name is George Williams. Don't know if you don't know George, he's a retired citizen. I am the secretary, and then we have a treasurer who is Harry Abel. We are the four officers, and then we have a board of directors. We have twelve members that are board of director members. We are all volunteers. At this point, we have one person who is working for the chamber, who is working just over at Ten Ninety-Nine right now, because we have advertised for a new person to be in the office, to be the person that meets the public, the person that keeps up the emails, contacts people, and does the work. We talked about when was the chamber open, and when did people go to it? Well, we were, we didn't know, because when I say we, I need you to understand that we is a group of citizens of Dade County. We're volunteers, that's all. But we didn't have much history. There wasn't a lot of documentation to help us know how active the, the person who was working in there was, how many hours, but I'll share with you, we must be open for thirty-two hours and a week. Now, we need, we think, to be also open on Saturday, because people come to town on Saturday, you know, people who hope to come and visit and come to the welcome center. So we're extending our hours to be a Saturday and then five days a week, and this person would work the five-day week. We have, we're right now interviewing, and much to our surprise, we have had a number of advocates, and a few of them may seem to be people that might could do what we want. We must have someone who can address the public, a person who can share the enthusiasm that all of our, the people who are now the board members have, so that we can put ourselves on the map, because right now, we don't believe that our welcome center or our chamber right now is full and active. So we want to change that image. We have the twelve committees that I sent to you. All of those people are actively working all the time, and we're all volunteers. We have a website committee. If you've looked on the new website, Harry Abel's has done a lot of work with the website. It's really nice now. We have a publicity committee, as I told you. We have a business services committee. We have a tourism committee. Let's see there, let me give you the rest of it in a second. I have them on paper here, I can't really remember them all in a second. I'll tell you where they are somewhere. Oh, yeah. Economic development committee, a finance committee, and a membership committee. And we are getting ready to start our campaign for membership. We have compared the counties around us to determine what the fee would be, based upon the size of the business, the history of their, their participation in the past chamber. So we will be in the next probably month or two, starting our active membership drive. And we will do that after we get someone in-house, train them to know what to do. I think the most positive thing I can say, I was listening to all that you were talking about when you talked about the hotel motel tax, that's the money that makes that office operate. That's the money that will pay this one person employed. And I encourage that, we have so many good volunteers, that it will give a great amount of support to this person that we hire, and that will even boost the availability of the welcome center and the chamber for people. I'd like to just ask you, do you have any questions? Is there anything you want to know? Because we meet every two weeks on Zoom. We, we kind of get a problem, because sometimes we go for two hours, and we're only supposed to do, I think, an hour and a half or something, but we're, we're really, really going with this, so. I hope that you all will be as supportive as we need you to be. We're asking you to do that. We want to continue to come to your meetings and to share with you where we are. When we get someone hired, we get moving, we like to, we will have a grand opening. My partner over here, she is going to do a very special thing for us. Carrie's going to help us with, when we have the celebration of our reorganization, is kind of what we are calling it, because rightfully right now, we are only closed for just the COVID, the COVID experience we're having. That's the only reason we would be closed right now if we are. But when the new opening happens, it really won't be a grand opening, because we're really kind of open right now. And the girl who's working there, she's working some hours, she's working from home, and there aren't really that many people moving around right now and trying to come to a welcome center. So do you all have questions that you'd like to know, anything about that I might be sharing with you now that you haven't been, that William hasn't given you yet?
Mr. Abel, I mean, a few of them were here last month and spoke to us, and your treasurer, Mr. Abel, did send us, send me a report, and I forgot to get it to the commission, because he came it to my personal Gmail, so I just sent it to Rasana to give to the commissioners, and they were very open about showing the RVIC money.
Yes.
And the two different books that we'd given them, so that was something we asked, and it was here. I remembered it when you started talking, I said, oh, Harry sent it to me in my Gmail, so y'all see that here soon, once we forward it out tomorrow, but. And I have spoke with Jim that works at SLTC, the sign, he's on the sign committee, and I know there was a lot of input on the current welcome center sign. They asked us to put in with the prior group, and I told them I really like the name, where it says Trenton Dade County Welcome Center, since we're the ones funding it right now and with our hotel motel, it was really nice, and kind of took the look and explained to them about the signage that we're doing throughout the city, that we all stay aboard at, working together, alliance, and together to stick with the same font, the same scheme, and not have everybody doing different things with it, so. I'm just excited, everybody's getting excited about it and doing, working for it.
Any questions?
Are you working with the art council too?
We want to be partner with them in any activities that they want to have, and if we're having one, we would want them to be willing to also to be active with us, but they really, right now, are a separate thing. They're not part of the group that is putting on this.
Ms. Hickson, the lady that is leaving, and she was out for maternity leave or going on maternity leave?
Yes.
Yeah. It's one of the reasons y'all are looking for somebody to replace her.
Yes, we are.
We appreciate it.
Anything else?
In place of Mr. William Back, he's not here, we're going to open it to Ms. Carrie Anderson, Public Information for the Dade County, and she's got a.
Census recap.
Census recap. It's really big right now.
It is, it's really big. So the census was supposed to be completed April first of 2020 this year, and with COVID-19, it backed everything down a little bit, so now our end date for census 2020 is October thirty-first. That only gives us three and a half months to get everybody in Dade County to fill out their census. So we have what's called the Complete Count Committee. It was formed in the fall of last year, and we had different representatives from throughout the community on that committee. That committee was supposed to be over April first, but it has been extended. Some of the committee members have decided to continue on. We are looking for a few replacements, because some people just could not recommit. So if you know someone who is interested in helping with the census, this is not the door-to-door census, this is just getting word out. door-to-door census, this is just getting word out about census, please direct them to me, and my telephone number is 423-290-6655. Call me, I will be glad to put you on that committee. We've already had a couple of meetings. We had two meetings last week. It was, we had about 10 people attend those two meetings, and here were some highlights from those meetings. Georgia is now the eighth-largest state with over 10 million people, and approximately 16,000 of those people are here in Dade County. In 2010, the census response rate for Dade County was approximately 61%, which means nearly 40% of Dade counties were not included in the census numbers, which means that at about approximately $1,500 per person, per year, we ended up leaving on the table, losing approximately $145 million in funds to Dade County. I need to say that number again, that's a huge number. $145 million was what we lost over the past 10 years. That money goes towards things like schools, roads, emergency supplies that are directed to us, and we lost it because we did not get counted. That money does go somewhere, so if it's not going to this community, it will go to another community. So, we need everybody to fill out their census. You can do that by going online. There are three ways you can fill out the census this time. This is the first ever time in the history of the United States where you can fill out the census online. You can go to www.2020census.gov and fill out your census. It's very quick, takes about three minutes.
10 questions, three minutes.
10 questions, 30 minutes. You can fill out the paper form that you received in the mail. So, if you would rather do that, you can do that. Or, I did not know this until recently, you can fill out the census by calling on your telephone. You can call, let me make sure I get the number right, 844-330-2020. So, that's 844-330-2020 to fill out your census online. So
What's our current percentage now?
Our current percentage, we just hit 50%.
Wow.
We just hit 50%. So, the last time the US Census Bureau approximated the number of people in Dade County was June of 2019, and they approximated that we have 16,166 people in the county. We believe we have more than that here in the county, but that's an approximation because if you don't fill out the census, we don't know that you're here. A couple of highlights from the meeting. So, if you're looking, and we're just now at 50%, and the last time they approximated we had about 16,000 people, it tells the federal government that we have only about 8,000 people here in Dade County. The number-one site that is researched by businesses when trying to decide where to put a new location, and this is everything from restaurants to industries, is the US Census Bureau. So, if businesses go to that site and they're looking to see if we have enough workforce here in Dade County, and they see that we only have 8,000 people and not 17,000 or 18,000 people, then they're less likely to come here. Again, that's restaurants, industry, everything. Another thing that people don't realize about the census is that it's in the Constitution. A lot of people don't know that. Our forefathers thought it was so important that they actually made a mandate, and that's a word that we don't like to hear these days a whole lot, but it is important to be counted. One thing that we did learn during the last couple of weeks from the meeting with the US Census Bureau is that the US Census Bureau is, we know that it is a federal agency, but this is what we learned, they do not share the data with any other federal agencies beyond the numbers. They share the numbers and percentages, but they do not share any other data. So, they don't share data with ICE or D facts or anything like that. So, please know that your information is, it really is confidential. So, we will be having a couple of meetings this week, if any of you want to come or be a part of that. And that goes for anybody who's watching at home. I know we have some people watching this meeting from home. We have a meeting tomorrow, that's Tuesday, at the administrative building at 2:00, so from 2:00 until 3:00. And then we have a meeting on Wednesday from 10:00 until 11:00. And our goal, just so you know, we're currently at 50%, so we're a couple of points behind the state average for Georgia. We are about 10 points behind the national average currently. So, we do need to get that average up. Our goal for Dade County for reporting is 75%. There are counties that are already there, so they've already hit that number 75%. I mean, it would be great if we could get 100% of the people to fill out the census, but that's probably not going to happen. We had heard that the census was not going to have people go door-to-door as they have in the past because of COVID-19. However, they have stepped that back. They will have a few people onsite in more rural areas, depending on what percentage those rural areas are at. So, if you want a Census Bureau person to come knock on your door, then don't fill it out, somebody might show up. But not make sure to fill it out online or by calling that 844-330-2020 and filling out your census today. Does anybody have any questions?
Please tell your friends and family and church friends and all to help with this because that's one of the things, when we lost Fred's Pharmacy and the Fred's Center, we went after some other, and Walgreens being one of the other big ones we were thinking about, even the numbers that Kyle in Canyon brings and our Jackson and DeKalb County neighbors that shop in Trenton, they were looking for a 20,000-plus population to locate. And currently, when they look at that, that's the numbers we've got to think about, and also the, probably the distributing of funds through federal grants or anything, they look at that as well. That's what the millions that we've missed over the 10 years. So, three minutes, 10 questions, and you're done. It's not a lot of personal information. All the Androids and iPhones are doing it. So, if you see somebody, say, "Hey, just fill it out and help them fill it out." So
Or you can go to the library.
Yep.
They will help you fill it out at the library. If you go there, if you don't know how to use computers, the ladies at the library know how to do that, and they will help you.
We're looking at some possible campaigns to set up at grocery stores or out in the communities for people that don't have that, maybe move in our emergency communication bus that has internet, let folks come in, sit down with them, or help them through it. Just what we can do to help keep this raised because it's so important for the father. All right. Any legal matters before the commission? Any unfinished business? Any citizens' participation before we go into the new business? All right. We'll go into new business. Consider all items in the workshop. Approval of the agenda, approval of the two minutes. We had a June 8 regular commission meeting. We also had a special call meeting on June 22. And I want to, I meant to talk this about my, that was about the possible 1945 days. And I really want to thank that committee and that group for what they done for the Fourth of July. I seen a lot of beautiful pictures of the fireworks, and they said it was about 25, 30 minutes. Since the governor's orders extended that, we weren't able to uphold the permit for them to do that. But I think the sponsorship with them and the money they raise, and appreciate that group, what they done, and hopefully we could be ahead next year when this thing comes around. And also the minutes for the special call meeting. No proclamations, no board appointments, no splash. We moved to have the public hearings for the property for Mr., I guess it's currently Mr. Barton Harris's property, for the zone change from BR to RA Residential Agriculture to move forward with hearings. And item six will be purchasing the speed humps to install it to three locations on Price Street at Jenkins Park. Anything else we discussed?
Is that splash, the speed humps?
What was that, 1815? Probably so. It'd qualify for that. All right. So, we have all the items read off and listed on the, to be approved in our new business. A motion, we accept items read off of the new business by Commissioner House.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Forshee. Is there any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
I have no questions. I'm sorry. We were talking about the 1945 fair, and you guys have the special call meeting to discuss that, and there was an attorney here, and I was just curious if you were getting, I was surprised because I've never been an attorney here in like the 12, 13 years that I've been covering the meetings. That's the first time I've ever seen the city attorney in person. But, so I figured it was a pretty big deal. I was kind of surprised because I figured that there would be an addition or amendment to your event policy regarding liability because that seemed to be the big issue.
We just wanted to explain the liability to them. We had had emails and set that back.
So, is that in the event policy?
It is.
Or is that a policy or is that an ordinance?
It's in our policy now, and it's our ordinance.
Yeah, it's in the thing.
Are you familiar with M code online?
It's online. Ours is online.
Okay. Because I looked through the codes, and I wasn't able to
We just approved it a month before. Yeah, yeah.
It's not in the code book, it's on the application.
So, I guess I need to, you have it in the code that the individual vendors now have to have liability? Because I looked at like places like Canton and Rome and stuff like that, and Rome is like completely different. It's like comparing
A lot of them are different.
It would be weird, like we don't need all the stuff that they have in their event code, and they have a tourism bureau that handles that, and their code is kind of split up, like the roads permitting for a special event is different than, say, the, like the vendors, their vendors are permitted as food trucks, and that's where that falls under. So, that's why they have to have the Department of Health certification.
Any food served outside has to have that.
Through them, yeah.
Any through the state. We learned that as well.
Right.
Yeah.
But is that in here? Because I don't remember when you guys approved it several months ago or whatever. I don't remember talking about individual liability or any of that for the vendors.
It's in the application for someone to host an event on the city property.
So, it says that each individual vendor has to have liability insurance?
That's why we had him here to help explain all that to us, and he said it does. Or you could get one policy that covers it all for all vendors.
So, it's either one of them.
If you got a vendor that they have to list the city on the liability, any vendors they have and what they are, the food folks will have to have the Department of Health sticker as well, and they all list the city of Trenton as, for that date of that liability.
So, I know they specifically asked about touch a truck, but you said it was held on county property, but this year it's been on school property, but the city is still
It's not our property.
But you're sponsoring it, which means that you have to have the liability policy because I talked with Dr. Harris today, and that's what the school
If she's going to require that, then that's what we'll do.
So, you'll do, well, that's what their policy says. There's already supposed to be a, within like so many days of the event, there should be a contract between the city and the school board. They have a huge event liability policy that's actually pretty obscene because it keeps certain people don't have to follow the full liability policy. So, for another government, you don't have to do that.
So, I mean
So, you guys are going to hold liability policy for that?
Well, that's the police department, the fire department's brought doing that. So, if that's what they require, we'll step through it. But nobody stepping on property, they're driving through, picking up their bags.
Right, but whenever you have a car bump into another, well, anyway. If like one of your, one of the people that are participating gets hit by a car, then somebody's not paying attention, and that's the whole purpose of having
Yeah. It's opened a whole new can for everybody in the properties of the counties and the school boards. Yeah, we're just as
Well, I want the city to make sure to check in that because we don't want any trouble with that either.
Yeah, because it's Board Policy KG, and it's online through the school board's website. You can just pull it up, and it's actually, they have certain, for governments and for nonprofit organizations, they have a completely different policy, almost a different policy. They have an exemption. They don't have to cover $25 an hour fee for different parks that they're using, the parking lot and stuff like that. But it's supposed to be like an intergovernmental agreement, like for their use is what their policy says. So, I was just curious.
Wouldn't we need to check that?
The police chief already contacted you, taking care of it.
So, they are getting a policy?
Oh, no. She's taken care of. She's already been in contact, emailing back and forth.
With Dr. Harris.
I'm just letting you know that she has been in contact with Dr. Harris.
Well, you know, we just went through this whole thing last month, and it was a big ordeal, and like she said, it was, I'd never seen an attorney here either, so it would, brought an attorney in to explain all the reasons why there was a problem with that fair. So, I want to make sure that everybody else plays by the same rules.
That's why the police chief has contacted Dr. Harris.
Well, it needs to be brought to us. We need to know about it, just like
As soon as she popped it up, she knew.
But the event is planned for when?
2022.
Well, I don't think we meet again before then.
She would. She would email you and let you know that, "I have a problem with this."
Well, I think that everybody needs to play by the same rules.
Well, our rules don't go on other county property, though.
Do what?
It's not our rules on county property or school board property.
But it's our event.
Huh?
It's the city's event.
On county, school board property, you have to follow their rules, and for that, just like what Summer was saying.
Well, and didn't you say that they had to have a policy?
Of course, well, I'm not sure because governments have a special exemption.
Well, I just want to be sure that we did the right thing.
She said it depends on the agreement between, according to policy, it would depend on the agreement reached between the city and, between the government entity and the school board on what it's going to be. So, my guess would be, I don't know, actually. I'm not going to guess. I'm just saying it has to be
So, does the fair need to be moved to the school property? Is that what I'm hearing?
You could. It's the fair, if it's a nonprofit event and an organization, according to their policy, it falls under a separate heading to for liability. You have to read through
You still have to have liability.
It's pretty involved. Yeah.
According to our insurance company, whenever I contacted them about the event, our touch a truck is covered no matter where they are because it's our city employees. So, in order for us to get a liability policy for them, it's a matter of, we've got to contact our insurance company, and they'll send a certificate.
It's going to worry each other.
So, it's very simple.
Well, I just want to make sure we all do the right thing.
And we're covered because it's city vehicles and city employees driving those vehicles. So, if someone were to get hurt, if one of our employees, whenever you said one of our employees get ran over, our workers' comp will cover that.
Besides your employees, like the touch a truck has county and local businesses and everything else, and we're not just talking
Right, and whoever's, whoever they're there representing will cover them.
How much drive through?
All they do is drive and look at the trucks, and we're handing them
Which requires you don't have to worry about the social distancing because one, it's outside, and two, they're in vehicles, right?
And the people handling will have the PPE.
And so, even if the state of emergency is extended, you could still, you'd still be able to do it because of those things.
So, do y'all want to meet again if we get back from the school, or how do y'all want to do that then?
I don't necessarily want to meet again. I just want to be sure that we, that there was just a lot of grief over that, over that fair thing, a lot of grief. And I think a lot of it was uncalled for. Some of it may have been, but a lot of it was, and I just want to be sure that everybody does the same thing.
Well, the reason I asked attorney to come is because I sent information out that he had given us and the insurance, and there were still a lot of questions I didn't know. So, we asked that attorney to come, that also represents the city of Lafayette, that does two city-sponsored events. Let me finish, let me finish. The two city-sponsored events, and we were moving through this, and he'd already read our application. And then all these questions coming in from that, that's why I asked Steve Iran to come here and explain it legally because I didn't want to speak out of turn.
Well, he didn't do a very good job while he was here, I didn't feel like, and I wasn't the only one.
Well
I mean, he was very confused and really didn't, you know, but I'm just saying, I didn't, you know.
Does the city attorney, they just cover the two cities? Is that all they do?
No, they do several. They've been in business a long time.
That they're out of luck at, right?
That's right. How long they been
I was curious because I know, like you say, the Board of Education has a whole group of attorneys that, you know
They are.
Just education attorneys, and they
They used to
They used
They used to use them, but then they figured out that they really wasn't up to speed on school while.
They also represent ACCG and GMA for a lot of your malpractice or workers' comp claims and all like that, while I can run them and lead them. All right. So, we had a motion in a second. We all in favor, and it's all good. Correct? Did we get through all that?
We did, yes.
All right, we do need to go into executive session for personnel to update the commission on one personnel. So we need to have everybody leave the room, since we can't get in our small room, and we'll be...
Need a motion.
Need a motion to go into executive session.
I'm making a motion.